This is the Village Council's Special Public Budget Meeting. The date is-
One sec.
You lied to me? Said we're ready?
I know. It's not plugged in. Yeah, it's kind of a start.
So good, at least they'll have some room to spread out over here. Deputy Mayor, like, stuff all over your head. Looking over my shoulder.
Okay. Thankfully. We're all set. Yep.
Good evening. This is the Village Council's Special Public Budget Meeting. The date is February 24th, 2023, and the time is 5:24 PM. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mail to the Ridgewood News, the Record, and by submission to all persons entitled to same as provided by law of a schedule, including the date and time of this meeting. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Perrin.
Here, sitting a little back, just to social distance.
Councilmember Reynolds. Councilmember White has not yet arrived. Councilmember Winograd.
Here.
And Mayor Vagianos.
Here. Will you all join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will open up the meeting to public comments. Seeing no one in the audience, I will close public comments, and we will move on to our agenda.
This is our third budget meeting. And we'll start with our Finance Department and Tax Collector, and then go on to other funds that are with the finance area. Let it be known for the record that Councilmember White has arrived. Okay, so Bob? No, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Microphone?
I'm sorry, did you say something? Yes, thank you. Forgot about the microphone. Start again. Finance. Salaries and wages are basically flat to the prior year. I think the only change that I'm showing here is an overtime number. That is something that usually comes in play early in the year, and we use it for transfers at the end of the year. Other expenses are up for about 47%. The big increase there is in, I believe it's O29. And O29 was a software package that I was looking at for this year several months ago, put together by ClearGov. It would have facilitated this process drastically, but the cost being what it is will be one of those that I suggest we remove. So that'll bring this back down to a stable number for where we were last year. The other, I'm trying, everything else is contractual and other professional services with admins, so I don't have much flexibility there. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Um, I did have a question.
Anyone? Pam, anything?
I'm looking.
Okay.
So why did, what were you saying about the overtime? Why it would be less next year or a transfer?
No, what happens is, is we... My overtime usually is incurred at this time of year. And if we don't use it, we use it for transfers at the end of the year, but it's really not large.
Okay. That's the only question I had.
Anyone else? Good.
All right, so you want to do my capital for the new Mercedes?
Get, get the big one, Bob.
I'll do what I can.
Get the electric.
I was looking at that, it'd be very interesting. All right, Tax Collector. Tax Collector, salaries and wages are contr- Tax Collector.
F-I-N-T-C.
Finance, TC.
Yep, it's in code. Yep.
Now, we did that already. So again, tax, salaries and wages, flat to last year. No change in headcount. Other expenses are up slightly, and that's basically in the postage and express charges for our mailings. But other than that, there isn't isn't much of a change on those line items. Yeah, postage, printing, and binding. Those are our big costs in the collector when we send out notices, bills, things of that nature, so that cost has been creeping up. Any questions?
Anyone?
Microphone on.
The addition is just all salary, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Good. Capital funds?
I have no capital in tax, but if you want to talk about the capital in general, we can go on to that one.
That's what I'm looking at.
All right. So last night, we left off at... Let me just pull it up, please. I think we were at the library last night?
Yeah.
The last one?
Yeah, the generator, right?
Yes. Actually, we were at recycling.
I think we-
Weren't we talking, Sean was the last one to present, and that's where we were?
Yeah, but then didn't we, didn't we go into library? We talked about library after that?
I thought we talked about library, I didn't think we got to MIS yet.
We did, we did.
Yeah, because we did talk about the generator and-
EMS, engineering, assessor, fire-
We've done all of them. It's, we were going over the overall capital budget, remember, saying where we could cut things? And we got to library as the overall, and then Sean came in and did his presentation. So, do you want to start then with MIS?
Well, we did that already, but we could still do that again. So we're at 2.2 million, we still need 2.2 million.
Does that still include, does that still include the 1.5 from Sean?
It does include that, we didn't, I didn't do anything with it, because we didn't-
You, in other words, if we cut the 1.5 from recycling-
Yes.
Then we need to find another, how much?
Seven.
Seven. Okay, is there a consensus that while we would love to do this, the, the side loader trucks and, and baskets that go with that at 1.5 million, that it's, it's not something we can get to in this year's capital budget, so that we could try and get some idea of where we are?
I, I just worry, he said something about, do we have enough trucks in the towards that are going to survive on here? That, that was where I think he was saying we've got to replace-
What I, what I thought he said, and I could be mistaken, was that you can't buy one of these trucks.
Oh, no, he definitely said that.
Okay, good, okay.
He definitely said that, but I think of the current trucks that we have-
Did your microphone on?
Hello?
Hello, is that, oh, nothing better, sorry. I thought he said something about, of the current trucks we have, one or two are in really bad shape, and like, something has to be done. So that's what I-
I don't recollect that?
That's what, that's what he said.
Yeah, I think out of five, he said only one is really reliable.
Right, and then he said that if we got the side loader, that then we'd be able to put recycling into solid waste. Take those trucks and put them into solid waste, which is where we need the trucks, because they're failing in solid waste.
So in solid waste, he's also asking for 400,000 for a truck.
So we'd have to keep that in then.
And you know what, I guess it sounds like we may have to go back to him on some of this stuff, because I know he made the point that he needs two, because once, I'm wondering, is there a way we can use the old truck and bring in one truck of the new ones? I mean, see if there's a way that he can maybe get a little creative, because his point, I think, was that it'll take time to train, and you won't be able to get through all the households with one truck at first, but eventually you'll be able to do one truck, and then the second truck, which will be like a backup truck. I'm wondering if we can buy one next year, another the following year, and we could use the existing one reliable truck or something. You know, see, I mean, maybe go back to him and see if there's a way to pare down the cost a bit? Because I share Lauren's concern, I do remember him saying, like, we need these two, because the other ones are separate from breaking down, and I don't want to be the councilman to explain to somebody why there's garbage piling up. On the other hand, 1.5 is a lot of money for garbage trucks.
It's just that the, the carts are 90 gallons, I think he said. And are, you can't pick them up. So we could do part of the town as a pilot, and the other half of the town, or part of the town, would not be in it, and then the truck would be there, but then the issue becomes, if that truck breaks down, they won't get their recycling picked up.
I also think the other takeaway that I had in my notes was that the lead time on these trucks is, we may issue it, and it might not be a full year, and we could invest the capital because of the supply chain.
But he did feel like, I don't know, you know, he couldn't, he didn't know for sure. But he felt like if we put the order in, they had it. But they're not going to tell him that until we commit.
And I know he wanted the, the nice new side loader trucks. Are there cheaper non-side loading trucks an option? I mean-
I don't know, I think he got quotes, I think, from various companies. I don't know where it's 500.
It, it sounds like we should just keep going and try to find waste or try to find efficiencies wherever we can, but we may need to come back to him, I think, and say, is there a more creative solution to what you're proposing that still makes sure that garbage can get picked up, but doesn't cost us 1.5 million to do it?
I, I, I agree with Evan, I, I wanna, this is, we never, we're never going to get to the numbers that we need to get to without big chunks, and I think the question that we need to pose to Sean is, how bad are our trucks? Or how good are our trucks?
Right.
Because if they, if, and look, they, they all break down, we know that. If he thinks that they're, they're, they're okay for now, then, I, I hate to say it, but I think we have to put this off to next year. It is, it is a giant number.
Yeah, the challenge with this-
But if they're not going to make it, if they're not going to make it, well, that changes the arithmetic.
Yeah, the challenge with this is you either have to be all in or not at all, because if you only go halfway and something doesn't work, you don't have a backup. And that's what he's saying with the two trucks.
And, and you need to spend a half million dollars on, on, on the bins. So it's, it's, there's, there's no cheaper way to do these kinds of trucks. So I, can we get him back in on, on, what's our, what's our next day, Tuesday?
March 6th is our last one. We can get that information between now and then, though.
Okay. I mean, to find out, because, you know, it's, 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 this is not like a $50,000 item.
Right. But I think that he's going to have to buy a truck. So it'll be like 400,000, right? If we don't do the side loader. So, we're taking out 1.5 million, but we're putting back in 400,000.
Still a-
Yeah, it's a big, it's a big amount of money. I agree. Yeah.
I mean, is it possible to go back to him and say, all right, what's plan B? And maybe we could hear that at the next council meeting on Wednesday?
I mean, we could, Wednesday's a pretty full agenda, but we could see what we can do.
I mean, I know, I know, just, I'm hesitant to say email to us, because I know this has to be done in public.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Which is why I'm saying, even if it's just a matter of the information being given to us publicly at the meeting, I think we, you know, people are free to be watching, I don't know who's watching now, but they're free to, and I want to make sure that that option's still out there. So maybe, maybe not even a presentation, maybe a quick update, even if it's from you, Heather, it's secondhand or something.
Right, a, a report would be great.
Yes.
I mean, I, I think, I, I think Sean would probably be willing to come, if he is. I'd rather have that back and forth dialogue.
Sure, if you have additional questions.
Because maybe we could say, well, what if this, and what if that? And, you know, you, you're not going to know the answer.
If we, if we can put him at the beginning of the meeting, only because the last time he was here till midnight, I think.
Yeah, let's not do that again for the poor guy. And if there's something that could be bumped, if we really are that busy on Wednesday, maybe you can bump something?
Yeah, we already have a couple things we're probably going to remove.
All right, so then we'll, the next section is sanitation, we'll leave the 400,000 in for now?
Wait, but we didn't, or, so we're doing the capital.
Yeah.
But we didn't, did we talk about MIS at all?
No.
MIS? Yes, we did.
Oh, we did?
We did.
That's correct. All right, okay.
So it's already been reduced, you know, by-
Right, that's, so, am I understanding that there was, you know, a meeting not with the council, but between maybe department heads and Bob, and that, these, these modified by village manager, CFO? That's when those happened?
So we met with all, Heather and I met with all the department heads, and we walked through this.
Okay.
And we, everybody understood the importance. They voluntarily gave up some of these things.
Right.
Heather and I made suggestions to cut half of it, or implement it over a couple of years. And so that's what was presented to you guys.
Okay, thank you. No, I, I can see that, you know, a significant amount was cut from many of the line items.
Lauren, just to get back to your question last night on the drainage.
Oh, thank you.
Spoke with Chris today. The reason Hope Street is there is because they've had a lot of recurring flooding down there, and so that's why that stayed. The other two, Morningside had money appropriated in 2022, which they're currently using. They were looking for more, but they haven't finished what they spent from last year. And the other was Circle Avenue, they said that the, there isn't that much going on now, there was just a wish list.
Okay.
So that's why they took it off. You're welcome.
So, basically after the council discussed the IT or MIS, the two, 45,000 was reduced. Right?
Yes.
So that's all the, the reduction there. So we're good with that? Is that, are those good numbers, or do you want to?
None of these are good numbers.
I know, I know, it's true, it's true.
So, and again, here, and I'm just, tell us about the the $290,000 that is still in the MIS capital budget, and what, if anything? Look, we, I, I'll, I say this with every item. We need everything that's, that's here, but it's, it's not sustainable.
What do we use a vehicle for in IT?
Could you speak up a little?
What do we use a vehicle for?
It's, it's, that's unfair. Again, you're looking at modified by council, you're looking at final. You're looking at the overall?
Yep.
Okay, so final is what you're looking?
Right, so presented to council is what we're discussing. So, I know the tough books for the police department, there's a need for maintaining the, for new vehicles that come in, we have to put tough books into the, so that they can access all the files. And then we have had problems in the past where, if they go down, we didn't have any backup. So I think this includes one or two, or one to have on reserve. But it is an important part of the police department's functioning. The network equipment, and fortunately, we have, I think he's here, if you wanted to speak on it, but anyway, the network equipment is, my understanding of, you know, we took about $60,000 out of that from what his original request was. With the amount of Oprah requests and required paperwork that we keep on file on these servers, the servers are just starting to fill up very rapidly. And we can't, you know, delete information every year, which, you know, you could do at home on your computer. We can't do that here, it just, it's a never-ending process, and these servers are getting very expensive. You know, remember during COVID, China, not getting stuff from China? Well, now that cost is going through the roof to try and compensate for all those losses. And the last one that he has here, which, let me just get to it. The printers, so, you know, we have printers in our offices. Some, I think, have cranks on the sides, you know, they just don't function very well anymore. And a lot of them also are not compatible with the laptops and the desktops that we have, so, you know, that's the need that we have to keep functioning.
Okay, we might have to circle back to this, because, you know, we're not, we're not, we're not even getting close, and, and we're, and we're quizzical on the 1.5 million for recycling trucks. So, I mean, that brings us within, within spitting distance of this. So, again, it's not that we don't need everything that's, that's here and more. So, let's continue.
Okay.
I mean, I, I would say, just with the commitment that people are going more towards electronic, we could ditch the printer. I mean, the compatibility issue should be pretty easily removed. I don't want to be like too techie, but it seems that if we have a printer and it works, we could make it work, and that would be one little cut. I, I agree on the server space, because that goes to speed, I don't think we can cut that, and it's important to keep public documents, you know, that's an investment in our integrity. But I would, I'd say buy to the printer.
We can take it out, I have no problem.
Or maybe just reduce it by half or something, this is multiple printers, I think.
Yes, it is.
It's not just one printer.
So take it down to 10?
Yeah.
Okay.
Shows our commitment to paperless people.
Except we have to keep paper forever. In the clerk's office, there are things we have to keep forever in paper form, so.
Trust me, when I saw the storage fee for the building department, and I, that was the most interesting thing, that we pay all that money to keep all that paper.
And they have to keep some things forever, too.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. So, okay, so, you have a $20,000, we're getting there. Slowly.
We only need another billion and a half.
That's how we're going to have to do it, you know, at this point. OEM, so he has the trailer, and then-
That's it?
That's it, because we took out the storage.
The, unfortunately, or fortunately, the trailer pays for itself in two years. You can't, I mean, that's, that's being penny wise and pound foolish.
So we're at Parks?
The, wait, the surveillance camera.
That's out.
Well, it says surveillance camera trailer, so is that the trailer?
Yeah, 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 now I remember, I remember. I'm confusing this with the, the one at the View.
Oh, right.
I actually thought he made a pretty compelling case to the storage container, the $16,000 one.
Right.
Not that I want to put money back in, but it sounded like a pretty good deal for 16 grand, if we were going to save a bunch of money and have access to our stuff 24 hours.
Yeah.
Just, just to point out, Evan, we didn't bring this up last night, but where that storage container's going, let's say it goes down to Signal, all the infrastructure has to be installed, and that's not in this cost. This is just the container, this is not to put the wiring, the whatever you need, the drainage. This is just cost for that, so I think that-
That makes a big difference.
That wasn't full disclosure.
So maybe, all right, if that's the case, bring it back next year with a full quote, not just the quote for the actual hardware.
Yes.
Right.
And what about the surveillance camera trailer? We have lived without it, I know we want it, we need it, but if we have lived without it to this point?
Fine by me.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. And by the way, when, when we say we're, we're taking it out, it's by consensus of the, of the council, so if anybody doesn't want to take it out-
Speak up.
Yep.
Okay, Parks. The Maple Parks Replacement Thinking Fund, we have to do.
Right.
Because we don't want to be where we can't afford a replacement in the future. This comes to the trees, right?
It's always about the trees. What about, what about the, the dump truck?
The Mason Dump Truck?
Mason Dump Truck.
Now, I'm showing that we funded one last year for 54,000. I don't know the conditions of the rest of them.
It's, it's, here, for me, it's on my list unless someone can tell me, no, we can't live without it. Take it out? I'm ready to take it out. Anybody? Okay.
So what, what is the total amount for the trees?
Not enough, not enough, as the shade tree rep, I would like to say. You know, again, going back to the discussion, we need to make sure that Shedler has enough trees replanted. We need to be serious in our proactive commitment to the environment, and I feel, you know, the Shade Tree Committee is very grateful now to have the access to that, but I really, you know, Emerald Dashmore's a liability, it has to stay. I mean, we've got to get moving on that, because those trees are dangerous. And we need to continue the replanting, and that's just how I feel.
I agree, I mean, 100,000 is really nothing. Like, that, we can't cut that down any lower.
I actually agree.
Good.
At least for the moment.
I'm concerned that a lot of these funds get used up in tree removal rather than planting.
Yep. So, let's-
For the first time in a while, I do want to say this, because they've, they've been very vocal and very, they love to send me emails, and my whole committee, I mean, we really need to be real with the replanting effort and funding them, you know, and this year, they, they made the unfortunate mistake of not monitoring the money that we had given them last year, and I think they're going to be more on tap this year. Okay.
Well, I, I think the, the issue is that we should be putting far more into the trees than 100, but at least this way, we won't fall much further behind.
Well, and that's going back to Shedler, the faster we move on that, there is a replanting effort in that park plan, which adds more trees as well, which is a good thing.
Okay. So what's the next line item of 129 for EAB tree removal?
That's the Emerald Dashmore.
That's got to stay, that's Emerald Dashmore.
We started that project, and this is a continuing it.
And those, those trees are a liability.
And the tree wells will complete the CBD, is my understanding.
It will. So the, the Emerald Dashmore, just, everyone understands what this bug is and how hazardous it is. It, it gets into the, it manifests into the tree, it makes them brittle. If we don't take the trees down, the branches could kill people, that's really bad. And then, with respect to the tree wells, the remaining streets, the tree streets are to be planted, and I feel that adds to the virancy and beauty of our town, and the overall, it, it makes town so much better.
And, and I'm, I'm with you, and I say, we leave them in, we get to the end, and then, if we don't have enough?
No, no, we can't, we really can't touch trees.
I didn't, but no, what I-
I'm going to get like feisty over here.
Don't get feisty on me, Missy. What I, what I was going to say is, if we don't have enough, then we start at the beginning again.
Right.
And we look at everything, not we come back and look at this.
The Shade Tree Commission has three buckets, and to Pam's point, the deforesting bucket, because of the ashbore and other things, is one that doesn't even, it's not a positive step forward, it's like a liability step, we have to get rid of it. So when you look at that, I just want everyone to think of it that way. And, and the Central Business District, you know, I think we all agree, it needs that love and attention in those trees. Trees promote shopping, it makes it a better business district, they're incredibly important.
You, you had me at hello on this one.
Okay, okay.
I'm fine.
So are we, are we leaving the trees alone?
For now, for now.
We're, we're leaving, what we leave in, like I said, we leave in for now. We, we got to get to a certain point at the end, and if not, then we take, we go through it again.
Okay. So are we on to the playground?
We're on the playground.
Okay, so the playground, I thought we agreed that the diversion playground was going to be Shedler.
Wherever it is?
Well, again, we can't agree, because it depends when we get the approval from the State House. We have to place that playground within six months, and if we don't do that, then it won't count.
Okay, I'm just-
So that's why. That's the only reason why, Siobhan.
No, I know, I know.
If there were another reason, I, I'm fine with it at Shedler, everyone, I think, would be fine with it. Everyone, I think, would be fine with it at Shedler. It's just that the timing is what's gonna dictate it.
I think the location is less important than having the number right now.
Right, so this is the additional because we already had appropriated money last year and this is the additional because of cost increases. So, that's basically what that is.
We have to, we have to leave this.
I don't support it. Putting a playground next to a body of water with geese and, Lorraine, you've been there, right, with that, the kind of sitter, it's not, it's not money well spent.
But the issue here is not where we put it, it's having the money so that later we can determine where we put it. The fact that it says the location here, correct me if I'm wrong...
Right, that can be changed, that can be changed.
Yeah, this is just having the money to put it at Shedler.
We don't need, no, because the Shedler playground is in the budgeted cost that we've already bonded.
And we can take the money out of there.
But it's bonded and this is double dip. Look, we can, we can, I think we need to take it out.
We can't take it out because we need a playground to satisfy the diversion. We can't take it out.
To, to Siobhan's point, no, we can't. Never mind.
The village has to show good faith in appropriating funds to satisfy the diversion. What you call it can be changed.
Right. Do we have any idea when we're gonna get the approval for the...
No, the only thing I know is that it looked like the second phase of the final application, that Green Acres was bringing it up the chain. That's where we're at, right now.
And then we have a six-month window.
No, no. Then they have to approve it, then it has to go to the State House Commission. The State House Commission only meets every so often. They used to meet quarterly. Last year, they met like three times, has to go before them. So, probably the earliest it would go before them would be the fall and if they approve it, then we have six months from that time to place the playground. So, if we have this money, we could place it in November, if it's still warm in November.
Right, that's what I'm saying. If we get approval in November, December, January, February, March, April, well, May, yeah, but it, does it have to be complete with by six months?
Yes, yes.
Or start, it has to be completed?
It has to be done.
Okay.
It's got a weird restriction on it because it's a penalty clause, but if we put this in here and move the location, is that problematic for the diversion?
No, it's, placement of a playground is the main thing.
Okay.
And, I mean, what we were doing was putting it there because we were concerned with SHPO and the holdup of getting approvals from SHPO to develop Shedler, that it wouldn't allow us to place it at Shedler within that six-month timeframe.
Okay. I mean, while we're on topic, I mean, yesterday, since we're all together, can we talk about the SHPO that, was SHPO at Shedler yesterday?
They were.
Okay. And on...
They met with staff only.
No, that's okay. I mean, look, I just want to get this out with the, clearly...
We're going to have an update on Wednesday.
On Tuesday, when we met to discuss the budget, I expressly asked that if SHPO was there for a site visit, I'd like to be involved. We're going through, we're spending a significant amount of time. Yesterday, at the meeting, Councilmember Reynolds asked me, and it's an awkward position to have been super vocal, said it's $1.9 billion, million dollars, and I'm just feeling a little uneasy about making commitment and then not knowing all the facts. I mean, the neighbors, you were on the email, are upset that they were there. Being honest, I'm feeling not as comfortable with the planning process because we met on Tuesday and I said expressly, if they were there, I'd like to be included. Was anybody else notified they were coming?
I don't remember you saying that, I'm sorry. I honestly don't.
I said I'd love to, after all that time as a private citizen contacting Jennifer Lyons, I'd love to meet her.
Okay, I don't recall that, I'm sorry. I truly don't, but I apologize, but what, basically, this was for the staff who were developing the park, who are drawing up the plans for the park, who are gonna administer the park, to be able to meet with them because they had never been to the location. So, they're basically approving it based on plans they're seeing before them and anything that they have aerially, right, do flyovers, drones, whatever they have. So, again, this was for the staff to meet with them and to just hear what they had to say. That was it. And honestly, if we had, you know, announced it, I think that there would have been many people there and it would have been very difficult for our staff to be able to meet with them and get the information that they got. And again, I have not yet been privy to that information. I will be getting that information and we will be having a report on it on Wednesday.
Do you know if any of their council members knew that SHPO was gonna be there?
I don't think any of you knew. I don't think anyone knew.
You know, and I'm sure we could spend a lot of time talking about this and I don't want to cut this off, we have a lot of stuff to get through here and I don't want to get caught up in this at the moment.
I understand, but it's a public meeting. There's no easy way to do this. I'm not really interested in disclosing or discussing the intricacies of a site visit. What I'm most interested in, Lorraine, you can, we are making decisions about public money and public funds and I feel that we're reliant now on outside organizations and I feel that the neighbors have the right to know and even if they, we didn't tell the neighbors, we should have known. I'm sorry, it's not like I'm like mad forever, but it put me in a very awkward position with the public. I think it's put Lorraine, I don't know if anybody else got any emails.
I apologize if that put you in an awkward position and I apologize for not letting you know. It wasn't purposely like, oh no, they can't know. It was more that the staff was meeting with them to see what SHPO would say when they saw the actual site, you know, talking about, you know, the possible community garden, talking about where the land was, showing them the staking out of the fields, showing them the entrance and exits, you know, that was basically it and then going into the house as well because obviously SHPO is involved with the house.
Agreed.
So, and all of you have been in the house as well, so, and, you know, it would have been, if it had been council, it would have been two.
Right.
And where, how do you choose which two?
Well, we talked about that. I think because the project is such an important fiscal project, it's our largest capital expense, that we, all five, could have been notified and we could have cycled through the visit. I mean, personally, I feel, I just feel that making...
Okay, I was not privy to that conversation.
No.
About cycling through or...
We didn't know until after the fact because we didn't know they were there. It was just an approach. I just, I'm fine with this. It's fine. It has the intricacy of the project. Planning a project, you know, is an opportunity for us as a board to interact with this board that we have oversight and it was also for us to be honest broker with the public who is seeking information in a very serious way from all of us.
And we're going to give them that information.
I think that the sentiment in the email that, and I could only share it with, was that it was sort of a...
I think it was sent to everybody individually. That's, that was the impression that I got from the email.
Okay. I mean, we just, I...
Because I did, I mean, you sent it to me, but I got it prior from that person.
Okay.
So, I kind of think she sent it to, but I don't know.
Did anybody else get an email expressing outreach that the public was boxed out? Okay.
No.
I mean, it is what it is. It's now on record. I, it's, it has nothing, the details of the project, it makes me, because I like facts, as you all know, and it's not about me, but I am reliant on information to make these decisions and I wish I had known that SHPO was there. I mean, someone else, feel free. Do you wish you had known?
Oh, absolutely. Most definitely. I mean, I would like to, you know, we'll, we'll get the report on Wednesday, but it's, it's different if you're there in person and you're able to ask them questions.
And, and again, I don't, I don't know what happened. I don't know the nature of the meeting. You know, there are lots of meetings that our department heads have that we don't have to, and not necessarily should be there, not that we shouldn't be there, but it's, they do business all day long, they have meetings with, with outside agencies. I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that we should have been there, I'm just saying I don't have enough information to know that it was important that we're there. I know that it's a sensitive topic at this moment because we are in the throes of Shedler and SHPO. So, we're all a little delicate right now because of this.
This has nothing to do with delicacy.
It's how we, look, everybody can disagree. I feel we, as a council, whether we went or not is a separate issue, we should have, we should have known. And for me personally, in the meeting that you were at, I, SHPO has been wonderful to me as a citizen. They're an important relationship for us as a council. For, I mean, seriously, you guys, before I got here, we've given them oversight. I feel that it was rude and discourteous for us not to even, not get into the details of the project and it's fine. I don't want to belabor it and I think that when the public finds out stuff before the council, it makes us look less united. I'm moving forward. I feel better that nobody knew and it was a secret because, you know, that's, and that's what causes, you know, we're a team, we're supposed to stick together and I just wish we had been notified and personally, on Tuesday, on the 21st, whether anybody remembers it, after all the work that we did looking at the numbers, and it is work, I expressly said I would like to connect with Jennifer Lyons, should there be a visit. I thought, I think it's...
I might have left by that time, actually, because I had to leave that meeting early, if you recall. I, because I honestly don't remember you saying that. However, I'm just saying, I apologize if I did something wrong and I understand your concern and it wasn't to make it worse, you know, that you had more concerns, so, but we will get a report on Wednesday.
I, I think it's unfortunate that things happen, unravel, happened this way, but I'm glad that our staff got to meet with SHPO and they got the information that they needed, I assume.
Okay. So...
Shall we move on?
Sure.
Okay. So, we're leaving that in and let's move on.
Okay, so the other thing is the pavilion at King's Pond. I know the playground has to be in. I know this is also part of the diversion. However, that's something, I guess, we're gonna have to check and I, so that one, I'm not 100% sure whether or not we can take it out, the 39-6, but it is part of the diversion because we said we were gonna make that, it's kind of like a dock going into the water. So...
So, we think we might have to leave that in, but you're gonna check that?
I do, I do believe it.
Okay, good.
But I'll confirm that, but I think we should leave it in.
So, we have a couple of big ticket items coming up and tell us how badly, I mean, here, the one thing I see that can't come out is the Grayden Pool discharge pump.
Right.
So, we have to leave that in or else Grayden doesn't function.
Correct.
There's a chipper, there's a chip truck and there are utility vehicles that total about $500,000. What can't, what can't we live without?
I'm just looking, because I know that Nancy Biggs had mentioned something that she would definitely keep. I'm just seeing if I have it in my notes. Okay. Oh, okay. So, they, the number one that they want to keep, these are the ones to keep, right? Okay.
First one is the one...
Right, Mason Dump and Snowplow, Snowplow is what they wanted to keep as the first one. The second one was the utility vehicles Parks Division replacement.
So, we can get rid of the chip truck?
Um, I'm just trying to see.
We do have a significant backlog with the tree removal.
Let's circle back. The Mason Dump replacement of $108,000 that we already said we're taking out...
Yeah, we have to keep in.
Is their primary thing that they need to keep.
That's their primary one.
So, then we have to put that back in.
Right, right. And two was the utility vehicles and Parks Division replacement.
Okay.
And then, the next one would be the Grayden Pool discharge, the ash bore treatment and the CBD well, so we've already done the trees. So, basically, those were the ones that were mentioned.
Can we get rid of the chip truck then?
I mean, if we're gonna get rid of the chip truck, we should get rid of the chipper.
Those are the ones that are...
Yeah. So, yeah. But we do have a backlog on chipping.
Do other towns have chip trucks? I mean, if we don't get this, can we, can we lease one, rent one from another town for a year?
Yeah, they said that the chip truck and the chipper are three and four for Parks and Rec. So, one and two were the dump and plow maintenance, dump and plow, and then the utility vehicles. Those were one and two. So, three and four were the chip truck and the chipper.
Well, that's a significant...
So...
Those are big numbers.
Maybe they don't get three and four, they get one and two.
So, $295 and...
102.
So, those two are out.
Which is a chip...
$295 and 102?
Yeah.
Well, I will tell you that if we take out the recycling trucks, we're getting very close.
I was gonna tell you that.
Don't worry.
But, but did you add, if we take out the recycling trucks, you added $400,000 back?
I did not yet.
Okay. So, we're not that close.
I did, I did, Bob added it back in, I didn't add it back in, but let's keep going because we're coming to a very expensive department. And my, my first question is, did we hear back from the police after our request that they help us go through this so that we're not looking at it not knowing the order of importance?
I'd like to tell you that Jackie said, "Do whatever I want," but that's not happening. But I have not heard a word.
We all would have known you were lying if you said that.
I have not heard a word.
She did seem to hedge a little bit on the variable message board. That's one of the smaller ones.
Is the microphone on?
Sorry, she did seem to hedge a little bit on the variable message board. It's only, I think, $10,000, but...
$10,000 isn't gonna get us.
Yeah.
We need a lot of those. I would really like to hear back from, from the police department on this because we're, we're going through everyone's budget on this and I understand the police are the police, they really do, but we need, we need to hear back.
I think we could take out the cell phones. That's my feeling. You know, to, to maintain them for however many they ordered on a yearly basis is gonna be expensive and it's so that, and I get it, it's for a good reason, so that they can download the camera film, the body cams onto their cellphone. If they don't have it, they have to come into headquarters to do it. There's a way to do it, it's just that they, it's not as convenient, so...
I think they're all worried about using their personal phone. Obviously, it's a scary time, they don't want to...
So, they shouldn't. They should come here to headquarters and download it here.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that, I just feel bad.
I mean, this is part of the cost, this is part of the cost. The other part is the operating budget.
Right.
Cost, which we have to continue to reduce as well.
Yeah, there's another side to this. I mean, they can get the phones, but I may be cutting out the maintenance every month, so...
Yeah, so that doesn't make sense.
I think it might be next year's project.
Yeah, and, and, and so, if, if, here, Heather and Bob, what do you know about the other $500,000 in here in terms of, of priorities that we can't live without?
Well, a lot of them have to be, you know.
I believe you, I understand that.
We have no choice.
So, it looks like the vehicles were originally, they were asking for 360, for 360,000 for six vehicles, now they're at 200. How many vehicles are we getting for 200?
I'm guessing two.
Does that sound about right? Is there a way to carve that number down even more?
Actually, it says, I'm sorry.
It says two.
It actually says two, so it was a good guess.
Oh, it does?
Yes.
Two, 20, 22.
Two vehicles and four.
Yeah.
Originally asked for six, which makes sense because they were, 360,000 was what they requested.
Oh, I'm sorry, that two was for 2022, which is what they got. The four was 2023 that they were asking for.
Right.
And we brought them down to three, I believe.
Okay. And any three they can't make way with two?
Jay will shoot me. I would say yes.
And he's got a gun, too, right?
He does.
Don't say that.
Well, if, let's say this, then we need the taser replacement. I'm only kidding.
Is it-
I, I just think that we've been very proactive in providing the vehicles year after year after year.
The vehicles. Proactive.
Police vehicles.
Proactive in-
Providing police vehicles since I've been here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, up until I got here, they were getting, you know, one every five years.
Right.
Um, so, we've done a pretty good job of replacing the fleet and getting them to where they want to be. Um, I can't speak for them, but I can tell you that, you know, based upon what they, they were getting two, three a year, that seems pretty, pretty decent compared to what they were used to. Um, but as far as what their needs are, I can't speak for them. You know, that's, that's something they gotta come across with.
It, how, how can we, um, get the information from them that we need so that we can make an informed decision as opposed to what we're doing now?
Well, I'll tell you, let's cut one more out of here, and I'm sure somebody will call me and say, "What are you, out of your mind?" And if I don't hear from them, I think we're good.
Are, are, is that, is that really three vehicles, or is it seriously?
Well, if, if four vehicles were gonna be 360,000-
So, that's nine apiece.
That's 90,000 apiece.
So, this is two?
It appears to be, yes.
This is looking-
Yeah, okay, so it's two. I'm sorry, we took, we did take some out already.
So, it's, again, it's looking-
It's a little more than, I mean, if you were, you know, if they're all four vehicles, we're gonna be the same.
Right.
It's 90,000.
Right.
So, 180 is two, we could take out 20,000.
I, I-
If they really need to. Or can they get, you know, do we know what type of vehicles these were? Do they have to have this type of vehicle? Can they go with something a little less expensive?
What, what kind of vehicles are they? That's a very good question.
SUVs.
How big?
Uh, Ford Explorers, Tahos, I'm not sure which one they are.
Gas?
Yeah, they're all gas. Um, I, I think we, I think we need to find out about, about the vehicles, about the need, about the kinds of vehicles, because we've had these discussions in terms of SUV, of, of extra-large SUVs. A Tahoe is a really big vehicle, um, which the world is going in a different direction.
I mean, in fairness to the cops, I mean, have you ever seen a cop with body armor, gun?
I'm with you.
You, you're not, you're not policing in a Prius. You know, you need a full-sized, the, and listen, if there's a cheaper alternative, we should explore it, but I do think if you're talking 65, 70,000 for a larger SUV, I mean, that kind of makes sense. I don't think you can get away with an intermediate SUV without really compromise. I mean, I mean, you know, you have the computer set up in the center, you, you can't go small with police vehicles. I'd love, listen, I'd love to, but I just don't think you can.
So, it's like the 90, you know, if it is 90,000, is that it's the car plus the equipment installed?
Everything, yes, the striping, the, the lights, the whole nine yards, because when we buy them, we buy them, basically, the engine is for the acceleration for, I guess it's called the interceptor engine or something.
There's a police package.
Yeah, so, once we get it, that may only, that may cost us 50,000. By the time you put the lights on, get all the hardware around it, the striping, everything else, it's, you're up there.
Right.
And the radios, yes.
I, I'm, I'm, I cannot support this without knowing the need after the discussion that we had and not knowing even what kind of vehicles they are. And I'm not saying we take them out, I'm saying that we really need more information because, you know, the, the discussion was that they know their priorities, they can explain to us what can be taken out. It can't, it can't be, "No, we need everything." We know you need everything, we really do, and they really, and they really do, but we need, but we don't have the resources for everything. So, um, I'm, I mean, is there, is there, is there a way to find out before we have a final, have to make a final decision on these vehicles?
Yes.
Okay. Then, let's hold these in abeyance.
Okay.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah. What's the number, Bob? That we're at now?
So, we need another 300,000.
Assuming garbage is gone.
We need another, how much?
And that, we added the 400.
313,000, the 400 stayed in for the truck, we took, I took a million five out for the side loaders.
Here, I'm, I'm looking at if, if, and again, if you, I'm still at a million five on the, on the recycling vehicles. I haven't, I personally haven't added in the 400, which brings us down to needing about seven printers, 20 surveillance camera, trailer, 52, um, chip truck, chipper, um, three, four, 50, 470. I have that we need, if we, if we take out the recycling vehicles, about 230.
But then you have to add the 400 back in, right?
Yeah, I haven't, I guess, I have not yet added that in.
Okay.
So, I'm just, it's either 230 or 630, and if you, if you took out the police cars, that's 200.
Well, we have some more to go through, too.
I understand, and I'm just, you know, the, these, these are on, these are on the list, or these are on my list.
Right, but would I ask, I mean, if we take out the 1.5, which you did?
Yep.
We, don't we have to add back the 400?
Yes, you do.
Bob's number includes the 400.
I have the 400.
That's, that's what he said.
Okay, and Bob is saying-
And I'm not saying we don't have to, I'm saying, I haven't done it yet.
Yes.
But Bob did.
So, your number doesn't count.
Well, my, my, my number has, has a little-
But, let me, so Paul's number is 230, but then plus four, that's 630. But Bob's number is less than that. What's your number, Bob?
313.
313.
313.
That's with the 400,000 dollars.
The 400 is still in there, I didn't take it out.
And you took, but did you take one cop car out?
I didn't take any police car out.
Okay.
But if you want, I can get an auditor in here, we can take a look at these.
Sounds good to me. Did you, wait, wait, with, you, you took out the 1.5, but added 400 back?
I haven't, I didn't take the 400 out, the 400 is sitting in the presented to council column, right?
No, 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 we're talking about a different 400, I think.
Yeah, he's talking about a-
I took a million dollars out for the side loader.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
480,000 out for the recycling carts.
Yes.
Right.
The 400,000 for the sanitation truck.
What about the 400,000 for sanitation truck? You took it out?
That has to stay, that has to stay in.
We agreed it's gonna stay.
Well, but it's already in there.
That's correct.
Right, it's in there.
Right, it was already in there.
That's correct.
Right.
So, if we take police out, that's a huge chunk.
Wait, I, I just want to, I'm sorry, I just want to get to the same, I want to get to the same place.
Yeah.
So, you've taken out one point, rough numbers, 1.5.
Yep.
And that brings us down to needing how much at that point, before we get to any of the other things we talked about?
I don't know, this is cumulative. I took out the chip truck, I took out the Bandit chipper.
Yep.
The 295 and the 102.
Yep.
Took out the 52 for the trailer.
Yep.
20 for the printers.
Yep.
That's, that's all we did tonight, right?
So, that's, so that's 470, these, these other items, surveillance truck, printers, chip truck, chipper. After you, after you took out the, after you took out the recycling side loaders and containers, were we down to 700?
I, I'm gonna say yes, I remember 700 being-
Okay. 700, 470 from 700 is 230.
Okay.
That's, that's what, and again, you'll, you'll, you'll-
We're in the ballpark.
Yeah, 230. Um, so, let's continue the-
But, I, I'm sorry for harping on this, I really thought we had to add, I thought Sean needed an additional truck if we took out the 1.5.
He, he had it in his box.
And, and, and here, what, what, what we, what we were confused about, it's already in the budget, it's, it's already in the budget, so, we don't have to add it back in, we just have to not take it out.
But that means he was asking for 1 million, the 480 and the 400?
Yes.
He was asking for all three?
Yes, yes.
Uh-huh.
So, so he's got the four, what, 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 we were under the misimpression that you had to add in, if you were taking the-
Right.
The two, the two side loaders out, you had to put in 400 for another truck, it's already in there.
I, I feel like we need to get clarification from Sean.
We definitely need, look, we need to get clarification on, on all of these things, and, and I know that, that Bob and Heather will confirm what we're doing here in terms of, here, let's put it this way, I think that there's gonna be messages on their voicemails about what was taken out.
Sean, if you're there, call us.
And they won't have to reach out to the department heads.
I'm very surprised police aren't here by now.
The other thing with the police is that we are still missing the one-line item that we all wanted from the enforcement, right, to enable the enforcement agents to have the ability to check, remember that, on the presentation? How they did the scrolling?
Well, they, they don't have that yet, you know?
Yeah, they didn't have it in.
They couldn't find one yet. That's what they said.
So, I'm sorry, Shabani, you're talking about handhelds where they can read it, so, I did budget for that in the parking capital.
Great.
So, that's there.
Better.
The other thing that I think they had mentioned was a license plate reader, which they mount on the car, that's in here, so.
It's in here, it's in here.
No, the, two separate things. The license plate-
One are handhelds that they use.
Yeah, one's for the enforcement worker on my feet, and the other one was for the car.
Correct.
And then, another thing we were gonna follow up on is see if the library could cut their, was it 125 to, to 75?
I did not have that conversation yet.
Okay. Are we up to taser replacement?
Yeah, we're in that group, yes.
How many tasers are they looking for? It's unclear to me, is that a one-to-one relationship between tasers and police officers?
How many, how many officers are licensed for tasers? Do we know that? I think you have to have a separate taser license?
I, I believe you're right, but I think they all are.
I think they all are. I'm, I'm not sure about that, but I, here, I, I have made the assumption-
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they are.
That they all are. I don't think I've ever, I don't think I've noticed a police officer who's not carrying a taser. I, I could be wrong about that, I'm-
My neighbor in the city used to not have his taser license, he never, I, I guess he had trouble, I, I didn't know if it was one-to-one. Does anybody know for sure?
I, not for sure.
Even if it is one-to-one?
I'm gonna say this is, tasers for all officers, this is 100% replacement.
Yeah.
Then, my suggestion would, would be, see if we can do half that, that number, because they're not half of them on, on every shift, and can they share?
I'm trying to, there is a reason.
They have a code.
They are connected to their body cams, so when they pull it out, the body cam automatically goes on.
Goes on.
So, that's why I know it's for every officer.
Okay.
So, it has to be unique to that officer.
Are they under a statutory mandate to get these by a certain date?
That I don't know.
Can we give them half this year and half next year?
I think we go back to the police and see if there's anything they could do on the taser, ask them if they can get creative on it.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe, maybe there's some, that's a lot of money, maybe there's some savings there or something they could do as a workaround that doesn't compromise safety, but allows us to maybe push some of this into next year.
Yeah, unfortunately, the state mandates on what we have to buy is overwhelming. We spent $300,000 on body cams.
Yep.
I'm not saying that, that's wrong, but we were told-
No, if you have to do, you have to do.
They didn't have a choice. The tasers, I don't know, maybe there is a, an edict that they have to get them by a certain-
Let's just ask.
Yeah, no, we will.
Is it possible for you guys to sit down with Jackie?
Of course.
Next week?
That's what we'll do.
To, yeah, to go, to go through this and say, yeah, you know, give us, give us, give us your input, because-
Yes, that's what we'll do.
Great.
I'm glad I did the, I'm glad I did the easy part first.
There is no easy part.
That's right.
So, we're down to streets, two big items.
Were they asking for two hook lift trucks, and then we took out one?
Correct.
Yes.
What is a hook lift truck?
So, I guess we just get rid of the dump truck if we can, I mean, but I'm assuming streets, can they interplay that with parks? Would they ever share it?
No.
Okay.
Why is it they can't share? Are they in continuous-
I think they're used pretty much on a daily basis.
So, according to the description, it says, "This truck will be a hook lift, which will allow it to serve as a multipurpose truck. It will have box for hauling leaves, snow, dirt, and various other items. It will also have a salter and a snowplow to handle the snow events that may occur throughout the village."
Does it say how many they have?
Uh, no, I don't know how many they have.
Okay.
Too bad we don't have a weather crystal ball.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
That would be the nice thing with the salt fund.
We are, we are making decisions in the dark.
Yeah.
And we can't.
I agree.
Um, you know, there, there are some things that we're, that we may be taking out that are absolutely essential.
So, we'll just go back to, right, we'll just go back to all the departments, and we'll say, "We need this amount of cuts, we need your help."
Thank you.
So, and this, this is better.
Yeah, this is, this is not what, what any of the people in this room are in a position to do.
I agree.
Okay, did we ever figure out about the blinking lights, just when we're talking about streets?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
No, I, I, I invited him to the next CSAC meeting, which is like March 16th, but he said he's gonna be out of town. But I'll bring it up at the meeting even without him and see what they say.
Just have flashback.
Okay, so, so we're gonna table the capital budget?
Mm-hmm.
When will we be able to?
I think, I think what Evan said is a good idea. We'll take some stuff off of the agenda for, items off the agenda for next week, this coming week, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Because our next meeting isn't until the 22nd of March, and we're introducing on the 8th, so that's not gonna work, so.
I think that's good, because then we'll all be there.
Yep.[1597.22]
Yeah. So, would you, are we gonna decide what we're taking off?
No, we're, we have, we have a list of those things that we think we can take off. But, again, we're really not in a, in a good position without our department heads to tell us.
No, I meant off the agenda.
Uh, yeah. I, I have, I have, I have one thought about the, I had mentioned it to Heather, the fleet analysis, which we really want, but is not
Right.
time, uh, time sensitive. And I think it's gonna...
So, we'll move that to April third.
I have to tell the Chair of Green Ridgewood not to put out an email about the EV presentation.
Right.
So, I'm gonna use my phone for a sec.
And, and, and I know Rich Calbino's gonna work on that, um, over the weekend, so we'll let him know.
Yes, I will.
Good? Okay.
All right, so, debt service?
Can't hear you, Bob. Sorry.
I had handed it out to you this evening.
Is that the new handout?
Yes.
Great, thanks. It was just been for...
Today's handout?
Yes.
Yes. So, the 2023 appropriation for debt service is down approximately five hundred thousand dollars from last year. The note sale that we had in January is a result of the interest put in there is three hundred ten thousand dollars, which is close to what we paid last year. And the...
Bob, forgive me, where are you reading from?
The summary on the debt service, the first tab. You have the cover and then you have the summary.
Parking Utility Fund revenues?
No.
That's why I...
Debt service.
Is this in the new handouts?
Yeah.
Says Debt Service Capital Improvement Fund, Consolidated Dispatch.
Ah.
Capital Improvement Fund twice.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. And then the appropriation for the loan repayments is, I believe this is the last year we have, or if we have one more year, it's very small. And the contingent amount is same as we always carry, twenty-five thousand. Just a note with the Capital Improvement Fund, this number could come down slightly if we get to the seven and a half million dollars in the capital budget, because I need five percent as a down payment. So, depending on how that capital goes, so will this. Northwest Central Dispatch tab, which is towards the back of the handout, second to last tab. That's the amount that our share of the consolidate, the nine eleven function. And then the last tab, which is the Capital Improvement Fund, just shows the appropriation this year compared to last year and what the ending balance is at the end of twenty-two. Any questions?
I actually have a beginner's question from the beginning of this and everything. The seven, the seven million, where, how do you come up with that?
Could you speak into the, into the mic?
That we want seven million this year?
Seven and a half?
Yeah.
Based upon what we've done in the past years.
Okay.
So, I look at the seven and a half as what the impact's gonna be going forward when we finally issue debt and what the debt service would be every year. And I try to maintain it so that there isn't significant fluctuations. I don't wanna spike if I can avoid it. And I've been very successful so far, because the interest rates have been very cooperative.
Okay.
Okay? So, the seven and a half is the goal to start with. Every year, there's always those emergencies that come up. I had a Packer truck. I had water pollution control at the end of last year that needed a million dollars. And I had the settlement with RME. That was another five hundred thousand. So, those were added to the seven and a half, but if I had my way, I would prefer not to have them. I'd rather have the seven and a half million dollars. Stay consistent across the board.
And that's super rare, right, to bond against litigation?
Every year, we have some...
So, that's super rare to bond against litigation? Should I say it again?
The bond?
We did not bond against litigation. We purchased the assets
Okay.
that were being used. You cannot bond litigation.
Okay.
So...
So, it was recovered?
We, the assets that were available, we purchased, and that was the cost of the purchase. But to your original point, you can never bond litigation.
But the general idea is that if we bond the same amount every year, then every X number of years, this year we should be retiring about that much money in debt.
Yes, that's the plan.
So, we maintain the same amount of debt.
Yes.
But if we increase our debt, then we also have the Ridgewood Water Capital Fund issue, which now bumps us up closer to what is a potentially problem area. So, that's why it's really important to keep the debt.
I just wanted to know how we got to seven, and I, I think if the bond rate goes out of whack, that changes as well. I mean...
They question, every two years when we go to the bond, bond market, the radio agencies question the amounts that we have, and when they see that it's consistent, they're very satisfied.
Okay.
The, next year, or two years from now, we will be talking about the water. And we'll have to have a plan in place, which we're, we're doing right now with the I-Bank, to make sure that funding source is paying our debt service to minimize the impact on the village.
Got it.
So, the, the good thing is, our revenue streams in our utilities are sufficient to pay for our debt service and our operating costs. If that didn't happen, then it would impact our bond rating in the general fund.
Got it. Sorry. I just wanted, I've never asked before.
Not a problem. So, any other questions on debt service?
No.
Okay. Next one I have is deferred charges, and that should have been in your binder initially.
Okay.
Deferred charges.
Deferred charges and statutory expenses?
Wait, where, is that in the handouts?
No, it's, it's in the...
It should be in your binder.
D E F C.
D E F C.
D E F C. Oh, yeah.
So, this represents the appropriations that are required this year to satisfy any emergencies or special emergencies that we incurred over the last several years. So, we did have special emergencies that were appropriated for revenue deficit funding and COVID funding. So, those are the first two that you see there. We had an emergency authorization at the end of twenty-two for utilities and fuel. And the twenty-five thousand dollars that's left for the RME is the amount that was not canceled, but represented the down payment that we had to make on the settle, on the financing. And the five thousand dollars for capital ordinance is an amount that we put every year to satisfy our auditors to show that we are providing funding for unfunded improvement authorizations.
Unfunded what?
Improvement authorizations. So, if I have a, technically, if I had an ordinance that I passed for bonds and notes and down payment, and I did nothing else, I'd have to get the cash from someplace. And the requirement is, is after five years, you have to permanently start paying for that shortfall, so to speak. So, we have some straggler ordinances that have been around forever that we've spent the money basically, but we haven't identified the funding. So, we put five thousand dollars in a year just to, like I said, keep my auditors happy. Any questions on deferred charges?
No.
Next one I have is parking. Parking. So, I handed out to you the parking revenue sheet, which was put together.
Parking utility fund?
The utility one?
So, parking utility.
Okay.
And tonight's handout, and again, I apologize, these were not given to you earlier. I was dealing with issues that we'll talk about in a couple of minutes. So, that sheet shows adopted budget last year of two point three million dollars. We realized two point five million dollars in revenue. So, our parking revenues are starting to climb, which is very good. For this year, we're looking to appropriate two point six to satisfy the appropriation requirements. And so, in your binder, you have the parking appropriations, which had been provided to you earlier. And the biggest change there is a part-time PEO. Up until COVID, we carried a staff of two full-timers, sometimes three full-timers, and a part-timer. We have not had a part-timer on board since COVID. And in talking to Jay Chuck, his feeling is that the activity is being more now than, than it has been. Parking enforcement is becoming more critical. And not just for parking meters and things of that nature, but for parking yellow zones and double parking and just trying to keep traffic moving in the, in the central business district. So, his suggestion is we bring on a part-timer. We've been advertising for one for several months and have no, no one knocking at the door yet, but we'll, we'll continue. The other increase over the prior year, I'm suggesting we put money in the Capital Improvement Fund. And again, this is to help us out when we're going for any improvement authorizations for capital activity related to the parking utility. And I think that's about it as far as the, the increases. Pam, I'm not gonna put you on the spot, but I know you had a question on it. I just, if I can help.
I'm surprised at, first of all, a full-time salary for a parking enforcement officer of thirty-six thousand dollars. I don't know. I don't know how anybody could live on that. And then, my question was on one of the details, the salary and wages budget allocation. Okay, it takes me a while to wrap my head around the idea that parking has to allocate funds to other departments, give back to other departments. That's hard enough for me to get, to understand, but then when the direct expenses come in, I'm not sure what that means. Can you explain the direct expenses?
So, under the concept of the allocation, Heather's time, my time, Jackie's time, anybody that would touch parking somewhere along the line, we move that money over in, under parking, because that's, that's technically, that's where it belongs. If, if we did like you do in private industry, you do a time report every day and you show the projects you're working on, parking would be there and we'd each have hours that we can allocate or charge to directly. For those where we do have direct charges, these would be known expenses that maybe the current fund or another fund picked up on behalf of parking, and we can identify and charge it directly to there. But for the most part, the big chunk of what moves in here is the allocations.
So, these direct expenses, can you give me an example?
Where are you seeing this in the, what page are you on here?
I'm on the detail for salary and wages budget allocation. It's one ER, zero, one, one ER.
Okay, so, engineering, for example, if Chris is working on ordinances, and I know, you know, we've had several ordinances over the last few years that we've done, we would be able to identify specifically. He would say to me, listen, it took me four weeks to get this thing done, and I'd do a direct charge to this, and I'd write it directly against this. Whereas the indirect is something that's done quarterly, and it's just a percentage based upon what we've known in the past, that maybe over and above, maybe Yovan's time, because, you know, Yovan may have contributed in the past, and we know what his hours are. So, there's, I, I have worksheets if you wanna share them. I, I could share them with you that show how I arrived at that. Every two years, we go back to the various departments and ask them, does this look correct? Is this, are you spending more time on this, less time on this? So, it's something that we monitor.
Okay, so, so if I understand you correctly, the, the first allocations are indirect based on percentages and estimates. And the, and the last two, the direct expenses, are dollar for dollar what you know was, was spent or should be accrued.
That'd be pretty accurate, yes.
Okay. And my other question is, where in this is removal of the parking stanchions? Is that in here somewhere?
That is not in here at all. I did not have an estimate of cost to do that. So, that's, can certainly be put in operating depending on what the cost is, or if it's something that we can move, we have something left in capital, we can use that. I, I haven't looked into what's, what's available to pay for that.
Does that mean we won't be able to do it in two thousand twenty-three?
Again, if I...
Or only towards the end?
If I know I'm gonna budget it, I'll find a way to make it happen.
I, I was under the impression that we were doing that in-house and that, that there was no significant additional expense associated with that.
And I was under the impression that we were exploring the reclamation to come back into the utility?
They're definitely doing that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chris has said they're definitely doing that, but as, as I recollect, wherever it was that Chris was telling us this, that it was gonna be done first thing in the morning, because it's before all the cars are there.
Right.
And we're doing it with our guys.
Right, we are. And then, I'm printing the signs as well.
Right.
Yeah.
So, here's a perfect example of direct charge.
Yeah.
So, every morning, three hours, four guys are going out on the street. They're taking the poles out, they're putting cement down, they're putting bricks down, whatever they have to do. At the end of the week, they say to me, I got their time report. All I have to do is have Chris say to me, yeah, you had X number of hours for this, gets directly charged to the, the operator.
And just so you know, they were doing it today on Oak Street.
Yep.
And it looks great. Yeah. No, I was there.
How did you not send one of us a photo?
I'm sorry.
How dare you? Remember, you can't send it to a...
They were doing a very good job. It looked, it looked nice. No.
Really? That's so awesome.
Terrific.
Because I had to go to the paint store. They were, I had a trouble parking.
I don't know if the refinery would love, I'd love to see what the reclamation is, if we can get one.
Can't hear you. Do you know what I mean? Like, aren't you interested to see how, if we're gonna get money back?
Yes, but it just doesn't seem like we ever get the value of what we give up.
I know, I know.
Correction, it was Chestnut Street.
I'm so driving home that way.
But now you have no place to hook the leash on.
He's never gonna run away. He's got a good life.
Anything else on parking?
No.
Okay. Parking capital. We had two items. We had the portable radios and the license plate reader, a PEO license plate reader, for a total of fifty-nine thousand dollars.
Is that an additional handout or?
No, that should have been in with your capital, under parking capital in the white book.
So, do I understand correctly that they already have a license plate reader for one car?
Yes.
And this one is for the second PEO vehicle?
Yes, and according to Jay, the license plate reader's been fantastic. It's led to a lot of violation issues and not challengeable. So, it's been very well received.
Yeah, this is one of those things that pays for itself.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay, next one is current fund revenues, which I handed, it's part of your handout today.
Sorry, what was this, Bob? What did you say?
Park fund revenues.
Surplus current fund?
No, current fund revenues.
Oh, revenues, no, no. Revenue is current fund. Got it.
Oh, current fund revenue?
Yep.
Gotcha.
The one you can read versus the one you can't read?
So, working our way down, anything that's highlighted is still being worked on. So, the surplus for the, to be used in two thousand twenty-three, that's my estimate right now. That could go up or down depending on how my close goes. But as you can see going through here, you have a comparison of what we realized during the year. And just as a reminder, I am limited to only what was collected in the prior year. So, if I had any shortfalls, that shortfall is a double whammy. It hits me in the year of the shortfall and then the following year.
And I think I've asked this before, but the alcohol beverage licenses, are we statute, is that a statute, statutory fee, or can we charge more?
The, uh, we're at the max for the alcohol by statute. They haven't increased, you're asking how much they chart, we charge the licensees?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's set by statute. They haven't increased it in twenty-five, thirty years.
That's such a shame. That's such a shame.
Yeah.
It would be nice if we collected based on the value of the...
Yeah, no, I agree. And I, I know when our businesses do well, but if they do well, they should pay their fair share. And it sounds like we're, our hands are tied, but that is not a lot of money for, um, what do we have, four or five alcohol licenses in town?
Seven, I think.
Seven? Wow.
I think it's seventeen.
Well, no, we have seventeen. Yeah.
But that includes like the...
No, no.
Consumption, yeah. Oh, just bars. It's about seven. Yeah. So...
And they're all, they're all in circulation now, right?
No, no.
There's one not in circulation.
Correct.
Let's, let's get it in.
Two, two. One consumption, one distribution.
Oh, I'm, I'm thinking consumption. Yeah.
Okay.
I thought, now I'm gonna have to think. I thought Bearburger took the last one.
Bearburger did not take the last one. There was the one from the Elks Lodge that went in, to the proposed, the people who were gonna build a hotel on the west side, and they didn't do it, and they applied for an extension, because you have to use it within a certain period of time. Applied for an extension. It's, it's kinda pro forma, and they have a year or two now? Two years?
They have one more year. So, this year will be automatic, like another renewal. And then after that, they'd have to either, they have to prove again to the director of ABC that they've made a good faith effort to either cite it or sell it. And then the director then authorizes it to be done. However, the council is basically the ABC board, and they could decide, even though the director of ABC said, yes, they've proven their case to us, you may say, we, we don't agree. So...
But that's, we don't have a, if we turn them down, we, it's, we're, we're not on steady ground.
They have a right of appeal.
Yeah, they have a right of appeal. Yeah, they have a right of appeal and from what we've talked about, they, if, in a first instance.
Yeah, we, I mean, I don't think we'd ever turn them down.
No, no, well, at some point, you turn them down and then you have, you have a better case. So like if, let's say they came in for the fourth or fifth two-year extension.
Right.
We have, we are, we're in a much stronger.
The other thing too that you can do is you can, you know, hold a hearing with the licensee. And say, you know, we're concerned that it hasn't been cited, it's been this many years. The first year, they had to go almost immediately because it had been a pocket license, they purchased it. And they had to go almost immediately to get a renewal. Then this was the first full two-year renewal they received, so. But certainly, you know, that's what some, and and we've had occasionally hearings, A B C hearings, you know, in front of the council. But again, I did notify the licensee after this past renewal season that, you know, the village council would very much like to see this cited. And if it's not cited, then consider selling it, so the licensee is aware. But again, there's one more year, so it'll be renewed again in July to June 24. And then at that point, they'd have to reapply to A B C.
And then is the other one from Harding Pharmacy, is that the?
That's a package.
Uh, yes.
Package goods.
Yes, that's a distribution, it's not going, that's a liquor store.
Right, but they have a two-year extension.
Yeah, they've, they've had a couple of two-year extensions.
So under local revenues, I have about $5 million I'm anticipating for 2023. Next page, under energy receipts tax, we got $97,000 more than we have in the past 10 years annually. Not sure if that's going to be recurring, but for now, we'll be anticipating it. We had one grant program that I'm using in 2023 budget for health. And then under other special items, about the only one that was really significant increase over last year was the administrative charges in vehicles for police outside services. So that was nice to see. And then the other items that I'm anticipating this year, which I did not in the past, is the reserve for debt service of 638,000. And the revenue we're getting from Valley for bed count, which totals about 481,000. And that's good for, this may be the last year, not sure about how much we're going to get next year when they're moving out. And then you'll see under the American Recovery Program, two items that were in last year's budget. 1.3 million for 21 and one for 22 are not in this year's anticipated revenue. So unless the president comes up with some new funding under this program, we're, we'll not be able to use any more money for that.
Bob, could I ask just one question going back to the first page?
Yes.
The percentage increase on investments and deposits is significantly up. Is there a reason why? It's like 588%, just wondering.
Siobhan, we can't really hear.
Sorry, I was asking on the first page, it's a good thing, investments, interest on investments and deposits is significantly up, so I'm just wondering why.
So last year, they were so bad that we were only allowed to anticipate what we realized and that was 50-some-odd thousand dollars.
So your actual was just lower?
Last year, we were getting like 0.005 on our investments, it was terrible. So that result was, we only had 55,000 that we realized, so that was the highest I could go for this year. And now interest rates have.
Yep.
Were escalated in last year, so that's what generated the positive.
That's you, Siobhan.
Yes. Okay, next on the agenda, salary and staff levels. So you've got another handout tonight. Sorry, I left the magnifying glasses in my office. But it's a seven-page printout of headcount and all the individuals and what their titles are this year compared to last year. And out on the right-hand column, I put what their salaries would be if they were to be hired this year. So those are the, those are the asks by the departments.
I love the title, keyboarding clerk, makes me think of high school.
Can't hear you.
It's just, it's anecdotal, don't worry. Can we say yes to the clerk for the police for discovery?
How do you look? Should be, yes, the last line?
Yes, records, records, discovery, clerk, F T.
All right, so under, under the village clerk, there's one. And under police, there should be.
They're asking for 50,000 for that position.
Right, okay.
Right, that's under. So they're looking to hire another recording clerk in the village clerk's office. And then another engineer in the engineering office. And then for the building department, they're looking for an electrical inspector and a keyboard clerk?
Yes.
I know Jackie's been asking for that discovery clerk for at least, at least one year, if not two. And I was surprised that we, we said yes to police officers before we said yes to this clerk.
Well, I think the police officers is a matter of public safety.
Well.
I also think the police officer clerk will free up an actual police officer.
Exactly, and that's, and that's what, that's what Jackie said is.
Right.
She's got a, and again, a more expensive, more qualified police officer doing the work that a less expensive clerk can do, that automatically, I mean, frees up a police officer who might be working full-time, half-time, whatever on this. So that's a good way to spend money.
Right, but we also have a lot of retirements coming up and we're low already. So we do need to try to bring those numbers up for the police officers.
And I'm not, I'm not saying we're not going to hire police officers, I'm saying that, that maybe that lets us hire one less
Absolutely.
than we either want or need.
Right.
Can I ask?
Are we approving the headcount now? I just, so should we?
We're going to go through the whole overall budget and then we'll discuss that.
Can I ask why, under, there's like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven spaces for police officers, two of which have 40,000 each next to it, and then the other five had 20,000.
Because the, the other five were going to be hired in July.
Okay.
The, the proposed five were going to be hired, so it's half a year.
And it goes up to 49 because the retirees aren't reflected, is that right? Because she said 42 now, is that?
Forty-two officers?
Is that what she said?
I think so.
She said forty-four is my recollection.
Right, but this, so this includes the people, the number 49 includes the people who have still not retired, yes?
Correct.
Okay, got it. So we're looking at five retirees, which takes 49 down to 44, which makes sense.
But then it also has, so it has three spots for, well, two for clerical, cert desk, and then one for records discovery. So I remember, so they want to hire two, besides the records discovery, two clerical?
So the two clerical going back several months was my suggestion to Paul's point. Getting people to do Kalia and these other things would free up an officer.
Right.
So having someone possibly at the front desk instead of an officer puts the officer back on the street. So that was my suggestion and they bought into it, you know, it makes sense.
No, and I think it's a good suggestion, I'm just, it it shows two, I thought Jackie was only asking for one.
One records and two other admin.
So really, three people?
Three, yes.
Okay.
So the idea is to have, if I understand you, is to have a clerical person at their front desk instead of a police officer like we have now?
Correct.
Yes.
That makes sense.
And the reason for two is night shift and day shift.
I'd be in favor of those three clericals. I would be in favor of those three clericals.
Absolutely. We, 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 we don't want to have police officers. We, we, we want them doing as little inside the police department as possible.
They don't belong inside.
No, they belong, they belong outside, and there are certain things that only they can do even inside the police department, which is fine. But if we can free them up, it is a much better way of doing business for us.
Are we approaching a time for a break?
We are. Do we need a motion?
Uh, we, well, did you want to just, was there anything else?
Yeah, let's just finish this.
Before we went on the break?
No, it's a good time.
Okay, okay.
Good.
All right, so let's have a motion to suspend the budget meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thanks. I just need a, a motion, please, to resume the work session, uh, special public budget meeting. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. So, Bob, go ahead from where we left off.
Everyone have their mics on?
And you received tonight for surplus fund balance?
Surplus fund balance.
Two-pager.
I had that. Yep.
So that, I'm sharing with you what I know at this point in time as to what the available fund balance is by general capital, water capital, parking capital, general fund, water operating fund, and the parking operating fund. So that's just the history of the performance of the village and the various funds and how it's been utilized in the budget. Will be updated once we finalize our numbers for this year and then I will share with you again. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, the next one is trust funds. And these are funds that have been specifically identified to be held in trust for specific purposes.
Excuse me, Bob, is that on handout?
Handout tonight too, I'm sorry.
Yes, single page.
Is it the one that says draft?
Yes, maybe, yeah, draft, yes.
Got it.
So that shows you the ending balance, the activity actually, from last year to the end of this year for all the trust funds, and these are just the major ones. We have funds that are held in trust for permits and things of that nature that I didn't share here because they're not accessible to the village.
But this is by statute, I assume, that this has to be done?
Some are by statute, most likely they all have to be done by resolution of council to identify the revenue stream that they are to collect. But by, by statute allows us to use it. So when you see the state budget, there'll be a section in there dedicated by rider. All these trust funds are mentioned in there as being able to be used or spent against by the village.
Where does the library tax go to, does that just go, how's that work?
We receive the tax and we pay the appropriation to them, so it's a wash.
Right, okay.
And then can I ask another question just because we're here? Has there ever been, I, I know that there was two failed referendums, but with open space, if we, the open space trust, we'd have to change the contribution if we wanted to increase it via referendum again?
Yes.
Okay.
Where do the shade tree funds come from?
The Shade Tree Program?
Where's it, but where are the, the funds coming from?
So it's coming through recreation somehow, I couldn't tell you exactly. But it's either through contributions, most likely through contributions.
Like, like Adopt a Tree, that kind of thing?
Or like Linda's Grove would be in there.
Yeah.
And then, just so everyone's aware, we're going to change the, it's on the agenda. We're going to change how the ordinance, the tree ordinance goes into the general fund, that, is this where it'll end up? Yeah, so we'll see an increase on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
And the moment you've been waiting for. So in the handout that I gave you earlier, it says, tax, 2023 tax comparison at the top?
Where are we? Tax comparison?
One sheet.
Is this yellow on the bottom?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Wait, not, what does it say?
Not this.
One sheet, came out tonight.
Oh, a single sheet.
A single sheet.
Wait, wait.
And it says, oh, I got it.
This one.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So left column, that was the adopted budget from last year. The 2023 column is after I made a first pass of cuts, which I'll go over with you in a second. And then you can see, cut two, cut three, deeper dive, all the way across the top. And that deeper dive, you will see is now, after taking much money out, down to a 6% increase in the tax rate. I had a 10%, took a deeper dive down, now I'm down to six.
But that's before what we talked about tonight, correct?
That was capital, this is general, this is operating.
But Lorraine, to your point, the individuals that I gave you on the list that are positions asking to be filled this year, none of them will be filled based upon these cuts. Okay? And none of this was discussed with any department. This was my taking a slash. Because if I do have those discussions, I'm not sure we're going to meet the adoption date because everybody's going to want everything. There has to be some decisions made as to what we're going to do. And by that, to that point, council can say they want to add back. I'm just doing my due diligence, so to speak. So 1% is worth $367,000.
I thought you said 337, am I mistaken?
Tell it again.
367. So this two-pager that you have, that you got tonight, shows you the effect of each percent, one, two, three, four, five, whatever, prior to me making this deep dive. So if we looked at a 10% increase in the tax rate, I would still have to have cut 177,000 dollars up until this deep dive that I did, okay? So then I went back in and I slashed and burned, so to speak. So the sheets that Olivia just handed you, she just put it on your, on your desk.
Yeah, it's a big one.
Oh, this one, this one.
Uh, 10 pages, I think, 10 pages, yes.
2023 budget, 2.23, lower left-hand corner?
Yep.
Yep.
So now this is by department, by level, with the amount. So for example, village manager, I had left an increase in there for new manager. Then I took half of it out because I'm saying, let's say it's only half a year. I have to make some assumptions, so let's say it's only half a year. Then I looked at other expenses. First dive, first cut, took 4,000. Deep dive, took another 8,000, so that's $12,000 out of the operating budget for other expenses in the village manager. Village council, I took out a grant rider, first pass, then I've taken out an additional $6,000 for other expenses. So we can go through line by line if that's what you want to do. I've tagged everything here that I think were. I've tagged everything here that I think were significant. Anything that says additional was just a ten percent at the time or a five percent or whatever to contribute to the bottom line. So the big one, if you wanna get to police, for example, I made some decision, that's the third page.
Third page, what number?
Top of the page, page three out of ten.
Yep.
See police to the left?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So I made some decisions for Jackie. And I said, okay, we're only gonna, we're gonna take out three new officers. We'll leave two additional. I eliminate, I took termination payout because by law, they're only allowed to get sixty-five thousand dollars in a year that they retire.
Just question, she asked for five, and five were in the, were in the, in the most recent budget we saw yesterday? And now there are two?
Two.
I know those two.
There's two that started in January.
Right.
Right?
And two that will start in July if we go with this.
But it was a total of seven.
She had seven in there.
Yes.
Right, because of all the retirements.
Today.
Correct.
Right.
So doesn't, how does that work with the July? Have we made a commitment to them?
No, they haven't even interviewed or done anything yet.
No, I just know they're not gonna get a full year's salary, so I cut it in half.
I know, I just didn't, I I don't know how that all works.
Normally, they go into the academy at some point in time, and then they're paid from that time until they come out.
Right.
And then that's.
And so July is when the academy is, so they're, they're higher.
I don't know if anybody was in the pipeline, like if we say July is gone.
Well, there are two guys in the academy now.
Correct.
Correct.
And then they need, uh, honestly, they need seven, but again, we can only afford so much, right?
The two guys who are in the academy.
They're fine.
They're fine.
They're in.
And then there were an additional five for July. Now we've reduced it to two. So a total of four instead of a total of seven.
I got it.
Termination pay, we're limited by law as to how much we pay out in the first year. So I cut that back by three hundred and some odd thousand dollars. Took the records clerk out, took the two civilians out. Cut overtime back to what they incurred last year, to actual. So in total, there's seven hundred and some odd thousand dollars that I've taken out of their salary and wage line. In some cases, for example, in streets and road maintenance, I reduce the budget because I have funds available in my snow trust that I can charge to. The trust numbers that I just reflect, gave you, I have money in there that I might be able to charge.
I, I know that we, I know that you've already taken this into account, but the fact that it has yet to snow this year, you've already assumed that it may not snow.
Uh, no, because it could, we still could have a storm.
We get some of our biggest snows in March.
What's that?
We get some of our biggest snows in March. I can tell you for a fact.
I still have November and December. I have the records, I keep the records every day.
Okay, and and also, like he said, sometimes we've gotten the snow in October sometimes.
Yeah.
Not often, but November we have and December we definitely have.
I remember.
With the Frankins.
So, so some of this is educated guess, okay? Past experience, how much we can tolerate in the trusts. You know, we, some years we build it up because we don't have a snow event. Some years I have to whittle it down because I do. So I do have that flexibility. And I'm anticipating now that I'll have sufficient funds to cover these types of reductions that I'm proposing.
What was the, if there was such a thing, the driving force behind such a huge proposed tax increase?
Okay, so a few factors. ARP funds that I don't have in twenty twenty-three, two point six million dollars. Contractual settlements with police and fire, approximately four hundred thousand dollars increase. Healthcare increase of twenty-four percent, which is about one point six million dollars. Pension increase of seven percent resulting about eight hundred thousand dollars. And utility costs up about seven hundred thousand dollars. So that's a total of six million dollar impact, which is almost the increase I had between the ask and what last year was. So these are things that I can't work around. I'm stuck with. And they, that's, and that's not taking into consideration the, the increase in cost for materials and supplies that we buy. You know, our departments are gonna have to pinch pennies to, to keep providing what they do.
I remember there was some chemical that we used for grading that, and I don't remember exact numbers, but it was something like last year was forty-eight thousand and now it was a hundred sixty-two thousand. Or something like that, and it's not a, it's not something that we have a choice on.
Right.
All right, I'm gonna ask the impossible question. If we were to think about getting this down under four percent, what would we have to do? 'Cause that's about a million dollars.
You're gonna start looking at personnel. That's a reality.
I have avoided touching personnel.
You're gonna end up looking at personnel to cut another, under four percent, to go under four percent. So, and, you know, we would all prefer not to do that.
I have only reduced the number of asks for new hires. I didn't touch anybody presently in our employment, and I hope we don't have to do that.
How many new hires in the village are there proposed in this budget?
How many people?
I mean, and can we highlight, just because the long-term benefits of police and fire, can we separate them out?
So not including water because that's not part of this process. Approximately two hundred and fifty full-time employees and twenty-six part-time employees. Now wait, let me just make sure. Give me one sec.
But were you asking how many new hires there were in the budget originally? Is that, was that your question? You're, you're asking this one total?
How many are left?
Oh, okay.
How many, how many new hires do we have? Still in, in the current.
None, none. They're none.
Well, no, there, I mean, I, I know that there are, there are, I mean, here, let's start with, I know there were a couple of police officers.
Right, but.
And a new firefighter is still listed.
So that, that's what I'm saying. How many new hires?
Are still left at the six?
Yes.
Okay.
So twenty-three from here. Good, Heather, I'm sorry.
The question is, how many of the new hires are left in the budget at the six percent? And it's the two police and what else is still in there?
So I just wanna make sure I'm following this. So two, two police and then how many clerks are?
I don't think, I, I think they're all out.
They're all out. So the two police.
Are still in.
That started.
Right, okay.
And two that are scheduled for July are in here.
Are in, okay, and then how about fire?
Took the new fire out.
No fire, so.
No additional fire.
So any other besides those two police starting in July are still in, or they're all out?
All out.
Everything's out except those two police officers for new hire, and that's at the six.
Six and a half.
Yeah, right, right.
So how many new hires total?
Two.
Two.
That's it, just in police?
Well, four.
That would be, right, because they have two.
Two full-time and two.
Yeah, but it's this year's bu, it's still this year's budget.
Two and a half.
Yeah, but in other words, those that we have not made a commitment to.
Correct.
Two.
Two. That's correct.
What if we switch those two police to the one records clerk?
So.
We have, we have three retirements this year. We had two, um, two last year. So we're down.
Yeah.
I'm just, you know, that's a reality.
I'm just asking the question right now.
Yeah.
But the dollar effect of what you're asking for, Pam, is fifty thousand dollars for a records clerk as opposed to forty thousand dollars for two officers that would start in July?
Yeah, they, 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 the, the police go up very quickly, but they don't start there.
No, they don't.
So there's not a lot of savings in two police officer the first year.
Yeah, but for the longer term, that's the.
Oh, absolutely.
No, no question. No, absolutely. It's a giant commitment to hire a police officer.
It is.
But in terms of our short-term issue, it's, it doesn't help us significantly at all.
Right.
I mean, w- we cannot go out with this to the public. That's just too big of a burden.
It's, it's.
It's too big, we, we're gonna, I don't know how everybody else feels, but.
I can't hear you. What did you say?
We can't go out with this type of increase. There's gonna have to be a reduction elsewhere. I mean, I personally feel that.
We still really can't hear you, Shwam.
It's too big of an increase for the taxpayer. We can't go out with this.
Get close to the microphone. We just can't hear you.
You should see what I'm really saying.
She said we can't go out to the public with this big an increase.
I agree.
Well, I think we, I think we all agree, and we are at a loss to make even more difficult decisions, because up to now, they haven't been difficult.
So no, no new hires except for two police?
Yeah, which is.
Half year.
Here, to, to get this to just under four percent, which is about two and a half percent down, it's gonna cost us, we have to find another nine hundred thousand dollars.
Just from, and this is just operating.
Got nothing to do with, capital, I think we're gonna get to where we need to get to, one, one way or another. We're gonna, we're gonna get, we're gonna get there. This is a tough place, and what I'm gonna, what I'm gonna ask, and, and anybody can chime in who's got a better idea, is, Bob, could you and Heather huddle and give us a proposal that you don't wanna give us and we don't wanna see for nine hundred thousand dollars in cuts? So that we can, we can look at that and make a decision. And I don't know if you can do that tonight or if you wanna do that.
And that's even a four percent increase?
That's three point nine six.
Crazy.
Which is very high.
Now, does that, um, when we do the capital, the, does it, does the capital affect the overall tax increase?
Back from the capital, is I need five percent for a down payment for whatever you decide you wanna authorize this year. So it, if it was eight, if it was eight million, I need four hundred thousand. So I could take, which I already did, take a hundred thousand out of the capital improvement fund. I reduced it. But if it was ten million, I would have to keep it at five hundred thousand. So that's the only impact it has.
Okay.
The down payment.
So how do you wanna proceed? When could we reconvene on this issue?
And listen, I, I may be of the opinion here that if it means having to go back to department heads and give them a percent that they need to find, that may be the other way to solve this.
Can I ask a question about the caps?
Yes.
Are we, are we gonna be?
Glad you brought that up.
Tell us about how this all affects the caps.
So there's two caps that we have. One is appropriations, one is tax, tax levy. Both allow for exclusions. So in this situation, the state felt they were being kind by allowing increases in the pension, healthcare, fuel costs, a couple other items to be outside the cap.
Just for this year?
Just for this year. So that's not an issue. We shouldn't have any problem with that. I don't have the workbook yet from the state that will tell me what my cap is for appropriate, for tax levy, which is what we're playing with right now. There are exclusions for the tax levy as well, and they basically get, basically center around increases in the pensions, increases in the healthcare, changes in debt service. There's many, many factors that have to be input into this levy book to be able to calculate what we, and there's also what is called a bank.
Yeah, what's happening with the bank, that is my question.
So I have seven hundred thousand dollars in the bank that was left over. So that's, if I can, if I need it, I'll use it, but that math hasn't been done yet, so when we sit, look at six percent, and I do the booklet, I may come back to you and say, sorry, six isn't gonna work, it's gotta be five. You know what I'm saying? I, I don't have all those pieces together.
What do you mean you have seven hundred thousand dollars in the bank?
So every year, you do a calculation for your tax levy bank and your appropriation bank based upon this booklet that you have to prepare. If you don't use it all, you bank it. So if I'm allowed to use two and a half percent and I only use two, that half a percent goes into my bank. Every third year, it expires. So I have money from two thousand and nineteen that I lost last year. I had one point nine million if I needed it. Okay, and it depends. So you borrow, you pull the money out of the bank as, as you need it. If you don't have it, you can't go over without doing a referendum.
So are you, are you telling us that you have seven hundred thousand dollars that you could apply to this nine hundred thousand dollar?
No.
Goal?
No, I'm telling you that the amount to be raised by taxation, if I'm raising forty million dollars and the calculation to what I'm allowed is forty million, five hundred thousand, so I can take five hundred out of my bank and say, now I can appropriate forty million, five hundred thousand. All it is, is saying, it's the cap law that came about many years ago 'cause people were complaining about their increases. So they put a cap on how much you can increase every year.
I understand.
But they also allow you to bank what you don't use.
As credit, as credits or actual money?
Cr, just a credit. It's just a calculation. It's not money in the bank. It's a limit.
If you were to utilize that credit, how does that affect our tax levy increase?
So if, if I do the calculation, I do the workbook, and it says the most I can put in amount to be raised is forty million. Okay? And after we're all done, it comes out to be forty million, five hundred thousand. I have two options. We go to referendum to allow for the additional five hundred thousand, or we cut five hundred thousand so that I can meet that cap. It's, it's, it's not the same process as what we're doing now. It's telling me the max that I can put in there.
When will we know what our cap is?
Probably next week sometime.
Because?
I have to know by the eighth.
And do we have any clue as to what that might be?
No, because of these exceptions that just came out, that we got approval on, we have to go back in and, and input all this information. In addition to trying to close out all the financial statements, so I can have numbers that I'm comf- comfortable with to give you.
'Cause I would, I could never support going out for referendum to go over the cap.
Right.
I mean, nev, I mean, it's just.
I, I understand.
It's a disaster. So, um, if it's good with the council, if you could huddle with your department heads and say that we need to find nine hundred thousand dollars that we don't wanna find, we don't wanna have, we don't have to do this exercise, but we have to. And we'll reconvene to look at, and that, by the way, will give us a, basically a three point nine five tax levy.
Now, don't fe, don't forget, these are all estimates.
Oh, I gotcha.
Please understand that. So when I say it's three six seven is a point, it may be three nine.
It's, it's a rough, it's a rough and dirty number.
Yes, it is.
If, if we're, why are we, I'd like us to explore going further. I mean, I know that sounds terrible, but if it's an estimate and it goes up, I mean, we're really pushing it here. we're really pushing it here, um, I think, and, you know, I, I feel badly saying it, but it is what it is.
Nope, great.
It's just, and I think, I'm hoping everyone agrees, we should explore, you know, the variability in it, makes me a little nervous, so I don't know why we're saying 9, because you're not fully comfortable with that either, right? 900,000 seems to not give me much ease from what you just said. So should we look, help me out here, Bob, tell me if I'm panicking unnecessarily.
No, I, I mean, another $900,000 is really?
I know.
And again, I described to you the mandated costs where we have to pick up, I can't change that, we're stuck with that, so it's gotta, the cut has to come someplace else.
Yeah, what, what Shavon, what Shavon said was, was $900,000 will get us to just under 4%, and she's saying we should also explore a scenario that takes us further. So say, and I'm just saying this, under 3%.
That's really far, I was thinking?
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, and, and, and I, and I agree with that, so that we can make some decisions accordingly, but we know where that goes, so, so if, if you could give us proposals to go under 4 and to go under 3, I think that's, that's what we need to examine before we make a final decision. Is that, is that where everybody is?
We'll do, okay?
Okay.
Can I ask a logistical question? So what is the 8th in terms of hard stamp? Because we've seen, it seems to me like this is gonna, we need like four iterations now, and we don't have anything scheduled to the 6th.
So we have statutory deadlines as to when we have to introduce the budget and adopt the budget?
Right.
And March 8th is, it has to be the public meeting?
Right.
So that's why it's scheduled for the 8th?
So, hold on, I have a question with that, so is there an outside date to that? And could we declare another special meeting to have more buffer time to work to look at the numbers?
I'm sorry, I?
So, so I'm asking about the calendar, so March 8th, we have a pre-scheduled public meeting, which is when the budget needs to be, I guess, introduced, voted on, whatever. Is there a date that's beyond that in the statute? And could we go to the edge of that date, so we have more work time? And then declare, like, just take out an ad, Heather, and add an additional meeting?
Maybe we could, oh, the additional meetings, it's just that they have to be advertised properly, but also, my understanding is, is that we do have to adopt by the end of April.
Yes.
Right.
So, and, and there's a certain number of days between the introduction of the budget and the adoption of the budget. So there has to be a certain number of days?
There's like 28 days required between the introduction and adoption minimum.
Well, no, it's a budget.
Right, so I, like, it's that, that kind of 20-day rule, that's what I meant.
Similar, similar.
So, look, it's, I, I'm just, this is for discussion.
Yep.
I think we're backing our, these numbers are, and, well-prepared, no criticism, horrifying. And I think we need to really think about what we're talking about cutting, I think we need to do it, and we're being bound by a date that, not to minimize it, seems as simple as declaring a couple extra meetings.
Well, well, and, and in the, in the vein, you know how this is gonna work, so what do you propose in terms of timing, reconvening, so that you can make that proposal?
Just give us a couple minutes. Okay. So, um, what we'll do, we'll, we'll bring them in next week, we'll see where the cuts can be made, and then, um, hopefully be able to come back on the 6th and have those numbers for you. And then, um, we wouldn't necessarily introduce on the 8th, because you may make changes to the proposals that we've given you. And then, um, maybe we could do it on the 15th, which would be the day we normally don't have a meeting at all, and we'd have a special public meeting that night, and it would be just for budget introduction. And then that would probably put us to having a special public meeting on the third Wednesday in April, because otherwise we're at a work session.
Couldn't we, couldn't we call a, but, uh, schedule a budget meeting for sometime in March?
We have it in, on the 6th.
No, what I'm saying is, in other words, at, you know, for sometime the second or third week in March, I mean, this, this, this is a painful process, but it, it doesn't have to take a month and a half.
No, I'm, what I'm saying is, we, instead of introducing on the 8th, it would be the 15th, which is the following week.
I'm not here the 15th, but I, you know, I know Lorraine's not here on the 8th.
Right.
For, I think for all of us, this is not a training to do this together, is there any way?
The 22nd, is that too late?
Well, that's our, that's our work session.
Yeah, but can't, you can have a special, special public meeting in a work session.
Well, we can, we can come in at 5, I mean, you know, we don't want to, but?
I know Lorraine's out there a week and I'm out the next.
I'm away that week, but, I mean, Bob's here.
Oh, you're, you're not available on the 22nd?
I'm not available the 22nd.
Right, I, I'm just, I'm just saying?
We can look at the 29th.
But let's just say, okay, if we did it on the 29th, would that still give us enough time to?
Then we'd have to adopt at the end, we'd have to have a special meeting at the end of April.
What about, what about, I mean, there's the whole month of March, couldn't we plug in a couple?
March 1st is next Wednesday.
I, I, no, and, and I'm, I'm asking, I don't know, I'm just saying, so why?
So I'm saying we're gonna meet with them next week.
Right.
But after we meet with them, then we have to work, he has to work the numbers, and, to give you the two proposals that you're asking for.
Right, I'm just saying, couldn't we have a meeting on the 7th or the 9th or the 10th?
We?
Or the 13th or the 14th?
I think you're confusing two things.
Yeah, right.
I'm with Heather, so what, what, what I asked for, to be clear, is I felt that the introduction on the, the 8th was too tight, and, because I'm an agenda watcher, here's my skills coming in, I felt that it would be best to put that meeting out so we could have more time, so we could look, so we need more, we need our window to be longer. What she's trying to do is establish the date at which we introduce the public, assuming we do our, all our due diligence, two separate things. And, and the proposal that she first provided, given the timeframe for the back end of April, was the 15th, but that's not gonna work, because I'm not gonna be here.
Right.
So I think what you're trying to say is, why don't we make that window, the 22nd, before our meeting? And then we go back to these iterative meetings that we're having now, does that make sense?
Except, here, we can't do this without the manager. And you're not available on the 22nd.
Correct.
So?
Would the 29th be a possibility?
That's what I'm saying, and then, and then we'd adopt at a special meeting at the end of April, whatever it is, timing-wise. We'd have to, it may even be into May, because I, I don't know how it falls in the weeks, you know? 12th, 19th, 26th, I don't know if the 26th?
I know you'll, here?
We'll figure it out.
You'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out.
But she just has to do the notice, which is, so?
No, I understand.
We're gonna do the 29th for the public, we have the 6th, but in my opinion, I think after the 6th, we're gonna need another meeting.
But also, so Heather, if we introduce it on March 29th, then the fourth Wednesday in April is the 26th?
Yeah, so?
Which would be a work session, but we could add?
Except, except, it's, it's how many days in between the introduction and the adoption of the budget?
So how many days are between March 29th and April 26th?
Off the top of my head, in Bob's, it's 28 days.
It's more? No, it has to be?
It has to be what, 28?
So it's 28 days on the nose.
So, I don't know if that applies, I'd have to look at that.
Count, count the days from what?
It's 28.
Yeah, but you, you have to figure out how you count the days. It might be like the 27th or the 28th.
Okay.
In which case, I mean, if you wanna come in on Thursday, Thursday or Friday and have a meeting, just for the budget adoption, I mean, we could do that too.
It's gonna be what it's gonna be, you're gonna tell us how, we're gonna figure this?
That, we will, we will.
Yeah, there's a way, there's a way to do this, and, and, and here, the, the dates are the easier part of this.
Just, just realize, under 3 is definitely existing personnel. Under 4 maybe as well, I don't know. There may be more in OE that we can take out, and, and obviously, that, we wanna avoid that, we don't wanna do that.
But then, we also don't, I mean, what's gonna happen next year? You know, it's like?
And services may suffer. If, if you're, you know, doing away with personnel, then you don't have the personnel to be able to offer all the services that people pay for, right?
And, and you're absolutely right, and, and I think the, and I think the idea is that?
Just so you see it.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna give us, you're gonna give us a proposal? You're gonna tell us the financial and?
And then you discuss it, I understand.
And the service impact of, of that proposal? And then, and then we have, we have to make a choice.
Correct.
The only thing is, this is why the, the American Recovery Act was a buffer for the past two budgets, it really gave us a little bit of relief, no? In terms of some of this, because it's additional 2.6? Then the 2.6 really helped over the past two years, big time.
Absolutely.
So?
Actually, it was only one year, because the year we received it, we reserved it, we received it after the budget was adopted.
Which made it even worse.
So we held on to it, and then we used the 2.6 last year.
To get to 1.9.
To get to 1.99.
No.
Right.
Lucky here. $2.6 million.
Okay.
Okay.
Was there anything else, so, tonight? Are we back, we got everything?
Just about covered, huh?
Yeah. That was everything, okay.
Yeah, just, I have one last question, so for next Wednesday, March 1st, are we going to have Sean and Jackie back, or no, that's gonna be your?
I think it's gonna be our meeting with them, and then figure that out, and then also get that information about the capital?
Okay.
To see where we can cut?
You're, you're, you're gonna meet with them?
Correct.
On everything?
Correct.
And let them know that we have to do this. So?
Right.
Good, okay. Anything else, anybody? No?
Public comments?
Public comment. We're gonna open the meeting up to public comment, seeing no one in the audience.
Gabrielle, is there anyone online?
Gabrielle? Nobody, and no one online, I'm gonna close public comment and entertain motion to adjourn.
Someone move?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thanks.